Test. Test. Test.
We're going to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, April 3rd, 2023. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call. Amanda.
Sam Patrick. Brian Shimonous.
Here.
Scott Steckmuster.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla.
Here.
All here.
All right, everybody present, uh, number four, we can skip over, seeing everyone is here. We have no public hearing, so we can skip over number five as well. That's going to bring us to number six, which is input from the public. Anyone wishing to speak on anything that's on this agenda or something you'd like to see on a future agenda? Please step up to the podium, my right, your left. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Chinkumdelo. I live at 2100 Garfield Street here in Two Rivers. I have lived here for 10 years. I have paid taxes for 10 years. I am a registered voter. I'm 79 years old. I have spinal stenosis and I'm osteoporotic. I have fallen three times on the city sidewalks that you do not maintain safely. I fell originally on Washington Street on frost heaves. I cracked my collarbone. I was 10 years younger. I healed pretty well. Then I fell on 20th Street on a sidewalk ramp that was filled with wet leaves. I was told that the house belonged to a summer person and there wasn't anything I can do about it. I fractured my femur and my femur that side healed shorter. This leg is shorter than the other one. So that when I had the second knee done, I wobbled. On June 30th of this year, I was walking on the Serpentine Walk at Our Public Beach. I pay my taxes. I moved here because I wanted to live near the lake. And I was knocked to the ground by a Speedo Spandex bicycle racer. Now, I was helped up by a couple with an out of town, out of state, different color license plate. But he had knocked me to the ground and he had run over my cane. And I have a permanently ruptured tendon in my arm and I tore my radiator cuff. That's called supraspinatus. Because of my osteoporosis, which is a negative 4.7, I was not a candidate for an operation. So I spent three or four weeks in a sling and on a pillow. And then I had over six months of PT. And I will never fully recuperate from this. I am permanently disabled. I can pick up the arm. I can't carry anything with it. And I drop things with this hand. And I have spoken to you before and I brought the, the item to a committee. And I was told, get over it. I ride my bike on that by the beach. So. I have lived in Wisconsin for 10 years. I'm well aware that Wisconsin is sexist and somewhat ageist. This is a picture of my daughter. She is with her Quintana Roo bicycle. Because my daughter was a tri-wye, triathlon Wisconsin. She went to two worlds. She was an elite racer and she came in the top 20 in the two worlds that she went to before she had children and doesn't race that much anymore. So I know what I'm talking about when I'm talking about a Speedo Spandex bicycle racer racing on a city sidewalk. And I do think they should be banned, particularly at the beach where there isn't. I'm not talking about recreational sidewalks. I'm not talking about the kids that ring their bells. I'm not talking about the nice elderly people that stop their sit-down bikes and talk to you. I'm talking about the dangerous bicycle riders who are going 13 to 16 miles an hour while they're training and knock down elderly ladies and leave them there. So I'm here to ask you to address that safety issue. And while we're at it, why don't you do something about the maintenance of sidewalks during the winter? Now, due to having spinal stenosis, I've been told to walk. I'm supposed to walk so I won't freeze. The absolutely worst one, and I have probably called it in 10, 12 times in the last years, is a 10/20. Again, it is a rental. And the people bomb out over the sidewalk. They rarely, if ever, shovel their sidewalk. And then you have two sets of tire tracks which are pure ice. So I have to go down off the sidewalk before I get there, walk the middle of the street, go beyond their 50-foot front. And I have 51 by 76 on a corner. And I pay to have it shoveled and then go back up. And I'm just thinking, it's about time you took care of your sidewalks. And it's about time you thought about the safety of your elderly. People who pay taxes and people who are registered voters. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Input from the public? All right, seen none. We are going to move on to number seven, which is council communications. Any letters or other communications from citizens that anyone at council would like to share with the rest of us?
Just had that one come in today for all of us about the wifi.
Yep.
The hotspot, so.
Can you address that at all? The, the wifi, they were down, I think, near Fatso's close, maybe about, uh, I think a street away from a wifi hotspot sign is what the email said. And, uh, they could not access any kind of wifi. So they want to know if that was still up and running.
To be honest with you, I know I saw some, I think staff email traffic today referenced downtown wifi. Either Rick or Brian, if you're, if you could address it on mic, to the extent you know about it. And I'm sorry, I just kind of saw that in passing briefly today, so.
Okay.
Yes, I received an email from a citizen, uh, or at least we did through the website. And I did reply to him and just let him know that we've had some hardware failures with the, with the CC hotspot. Um, but we are in the process right now of getting to the point of replacing most of that hardware. So we should have things back up and running in the next 30 to 60 days with that. Uh, it's mostly affected downtown. I think the beach still works, but you know, who goes to the beach this time of the year? So, yeah, um, we had a couple of fiber media converters fail on us. And we've got one of the access points, one of the main access points is attached to the city hall here that has actually failed as well. So, and that's what feeds the information to the other access points that are out on the street. So downtown is pretty much dark right now, but we, we are working on getting that repaired, so.
Okay, so a couple of hardware issues and look in probably in the next two months or so.
Yes.
We can have that back up and run perfect.
Well, try to word out on that better on social media, what have you, through Main Street. Rick, do I recall too, was it within the, in recent months, haven't we negotiated? Not that it helps if the system isn't working, but an increase in the bandwidth that's being provided by NSight?
Yes, um, we have, I don't know, they're also working on possibly some adjustment to that, but it would be more bandwidth, uh, probably at least. Well, our current one was only at 50 meg, which was pretty, pretty weak for when you, when you start getting a lot of people on the system. But, um, we've worked out a possible free option from inside and also another option that would cost, but would also give us a lot more bandwidth. So it's just a matter of, we've thought about doing the free option first to see how that works and how much demand there really is and go from there. If it looks like it's going to be an issue where we don't have enough bandwidth for the demand, then we would start looking at a paid option.
Okay.
Make sure that we have some follow-up reports on that on future agendas.
Thank you.
If there is a cost factor besides the hardware, like for the bandwidth provision, that could be a topic for the room tax commission to take up. Cause it's, to a large measure, it's a visitor amenity, uh, that's provided. Although any of us can use it in the downtown. Thank you.
Yeah, we for sure want to have it up and running, obviously, as we get into the summer season when we have a lot of visitors, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Darla. Any other council communications? Jeff.
I have several again. Um, woman messaged me and said she saw the post about the yard bombing. The yarn wrapping around the trees. And she said, speak with a, with a horticulturist or a tree expert before moving ahead. Uh, these type of events usually take place in the winter. There's a concern that having yarn on a tree over the summer months or the warm season could harm or damage a tree, along with causing tree to become diseased, along with, uh, housing several insects that would normally not hang around.
I think they're putting those around like the poles.
Yeah, it's not on trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, she said they tried it at Silver Lake College, I don't know, like in 2014. Within two years, some of the trees were dead and they had to come down.
It happened in Manitowoc a few years ago and it kind of looked like salt on a tree. So this is only on the decorative concrete, uh, poles. I think the plan right now is primarily the ones at the intersections downtown.
Okay, I'll pass that on to her. And then I got another, I had a conversation with a gentleman the other day and he was wondering when the boat docks were going to be put back in.
I meant to relay that because I had a conversation with a fellow yesterday. The brown trout are biting, among other things, and people want to be in the water.
Very soon. We just talked about our staff meetings last week, so we're just, as soon as the boat company can come put back.
And he said normally, we usually do it around one of the holidays, right? But that's open for Memorial Day? Oh, well, well before Memorial.
Yeah, we'll leave it next couple of weeks, probably.
Oh, okay. Cause that's what he was asking, that if we could up that once the ice is gone, there's really, cause there's a lot of people that want to go out brown trout fishing, so. Yeah, usually it's a matter of cleaning up the parking lot that gets used as a snow dump to make sure the debris and anything that might end up in your tires is out of there. And of course, you know, things have cleared out pretty well as far as the snow and ice, so. Uh, we'll, we'll provide an update on that as well. So we actually have a private company come in and put the piers in, Mike?
No, that's.
Or the channel markers?
Channel markers, it was 60Q.
Correct.
Uh, and then, yeah, here's the private.
DPW usually puts the docks in.
Yeah.
The skid, skid piers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it should be soon, really.
Okay, I'll pass that back on to them. And I also had a conversation with a couple and they were wondering about, uh, audio equipment that's in the hallways for the surveillance. Do we have audio in it?
Not to the best of my knowledge. And actually, when that first hit the media in Green Bay, I talked to both, uh, Chief Minard and former Chief Colmeyer, who's head of our, uh, our electronics wizard. And, uh, no, we, we certainly haven't paid for nor installed any audio.
All right, I'll pass that on to them. It was a good legitimate question.
It's a, yeah, it's an outstanding, bad idea.
Yeah. Yep. Too many privacy concerns.
Amen. No, we do not.
Okay. And that's all I got. The other one we just discussed.
Okay. Anybody else? Council communications? Nope, seen none. All right, then we're going to move on to number eight, which is council reports from boards, commissions or committees. Anyone have anything they need to report on that? Darla.
Okay, for Main Street, actually, there's some really cool stuff that's going to be going on. Um, first of all, on April 12th, our state Main Street director is going to be visiting Two Rivers. And the gal who is in that position, um, she's going to be meeting individually with as many businesses in the downtown area that want to meet with her. So whoever's watching, if you own a business within the bid district or you know somebody who does, let them know that they will have this opportunity to talk to the state Main Street, um, director. It, it's a good opportunity. Uh, I mean, Jason, he fields a lot of the same questions, but this is a little bit different. Um, also, we are looking at a potential for a, um, Main Street Spring Wine Walk. We had, we had put that aside in favor of having this sweet street, um, during that timeframe. The reason for that is because it was more family friendly and kids could participate. Um, and that went really well, but we're now getting a lot of, uh, interest in having that spring wine walk along with the fall. So we're looking at that. So if anybody's got any opinion on that, get in touch with Main Street. Um, oh, here's a good one. According to Main Street this morning, American Pickers is coming to Wisconsin this summer. And I'm not going to go into all the details, but if you want more information, get in touch with Main Street and they can give you all of the information you would need. Um, right now, we're still fooling around downtown. It started April 1st, it goes through the 10th. It helps to bring, um, people into businesses in the downtown area. And just to, just to put this out there for now, since the weather is good, um, on Thursday, April 6th, there's going to be early spring hike out at Woodland Dunes. And if the, if the weather continues to be in our favor, it's going to be a very nice event. So that's what I've got for Main Street. Um, for environmental advisory board, just want to let everyone know that April 6th, um, Jim Nickelbine from Woodland Dunes will be speaking at the library, um, for our winter series. And that's going to be every, everything from like green infrastructure, things that they have, um, started out at Woodland Dunes, all the way to, um, initiatives that they are working on right now and what's upcoming. So if you, if you want to find out more about Woodland Dunes and what they're, you know, what they have planned, that'd be a perfect time to go. And then our final one is going to be on May 18th. And that's going to be about the pollinators and pollinator gardens. Um, just want to let you guys know that as far as the front yard vegetable garden, um, the yard signs, uh, I believe have been ordered.
Lisa was finalizing the artwork today and.
Yeah. I think Gina might have ordered them.
Okay.
And she's ordering 20 because that's how many spots we've got. So it's first come, first served. Um, we will have all of the application and guidelines printed out really soon. So it's, when we get the, the signs, then it's going to be open to everybody who wants to get a, you know, to fill out an application. So, um, I've already heard from three different people that they're interested in doing it. Um, that's my biggest fear is we've gone through all of this to get this program, um, proposal done and it was accepted. And then nobody participates. That's my, that's my one big fear. And hopefully that, that doesn't come true. So if you want to participate, get in touch with the city. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Darla. Anybody else from boards, commissions or committees?
I got, uh, something from the committee on aging this morning. Uh, Heather's happy to report that, uh, uh, senior center now has over a thousand members. Matter of fact, they have 1,013 members. And last month, they served over 1,023 meals. And 114 volunteers serve over 400 hours. So kind of a milestone for the senior center. So if you're looking to become a member, it's $15 a year.
Awesome. So things are ticking up in the right direction down there after COVID. Good.
Like today, this afternoon, they had a, uh, they have a Monday matinee in the afternoon. I think that's every Monday movie, uh, movie. And, uh, all kinds of others, uh, because of the, we're actually going to have a celebration on May 12th. They're going to have a pizza party because of all the numbers that they got.
Nice. Cool.
All kinds of stuff going on at Senior Center.
Yeah, good. Good to see, especially after COVID, because things really kind of took a nose, nosedive there. And now that see them coming back up is absolutely wonderful to see.
Also that's saying, like in any department, council members, welcome to stop in, uh, give a call over there. Maybe stop by for a noon meal. You're right, it's, uh, post-COVID, it's great to see those numbers coming back up. We got a, a staff that's doing a fantastic job over there, so.
Kudos to all the volunteers that help out. That's a lot of hours and they make a big difference in the seniors' lives, especially delivering those meals to people that can't get up and get them themselves. So awesome job. Anybody else? All right, seen none. We're going to go over to the city managers' report and Greg Buckley.
Okay, got my report for tonight. We'll keep her moving along. Uh, you may have heard there's an election tomorrow. Uh, um, the people saying bad things about each other are not running for city council. They're running for other offices with big ad budgets. But, uh, there are of course six candidates for three at-large seats on the city council. Polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM tomorrow. So get on out and vote. There are of course, uh, that, that one, the, the local election, very important. And state Supreme Court, uh, race and a number of other state ballot issues. Also, Two Rivers Board of Education. Kudos to our clerk, deputy clerk and all the election workers, by the way. Cause demo, the wheels of democracy at the local level really depend on, I'm, I'm going to call them volunteers.
to call them volunteers, they get paid, but they do it for the love of community. In the area of staffing, last week, the Police and Fire Commission did a preliminary review of the applications received in the second round of advertising for the chief's position. They're meeting again, Amanda, next week? Next week, Thursday, and anticipate identifying those candidates that would be invited in for interviews, and also what outside resources they might be using as far as chiefs or deputy chiefs from other departments who could assist in the screening process. So that's coming along. And in the meantime, things remain in good hands with, with our acting chief, Murak, at the department, and the staff over there. But we're getting closer, I think.
Is that pretty typical, to go to other communities and seek out some of their chiefs or assistant chiefs?
It's fairly typical to invite in someone as a panelist.
I'm just curious, yeah.
Yep, yep. That was, that happened at least the last time when selection was made.
Nice.
Yep. There has been one interview, I know, and still looking at options, our Community Development Director and our new Tourism Director, looking at options for filling the halftime 20 to 25 hour per week Tourism Media and Marketing Coordinator position. We're advertising for temporary seasonal public works, maintenance workers, too, I believe. We have one returning from last year, police officer. There is currently one full-time vacancy on the force, and as noted here, applications were due at the end of March. The departments in the process are reviewing applications, and there's also a current recruitment going on for about a six-month full-time temporary position of park maintenance worker, and that's ongoing also, isn't it? That one's ongoing. So opportunities there, both seasonal and career positions with the city. In the area personnel, we'd like to congratulate Gina, our Utility Administrative Assistant, who recently completed her management training program at MEUW, and that involved classes in six different areas. And she is the fifth member of the Electric Department to complete the program. So we congratulate her on that achievement. Central Park West 365, whole lot going on over there. Stay outside the, you know, the orange and white barricades, but one thing you'll notice, like in the photo to the left, with the regrading activity going on throughout the design process and early construction, there have been questions about, you know, how, what are you going to do to try to deter, at least discourage, little children from heading out into Washington Street? Well, especially the southerly half of the park, that Washington Street frontage will have pretty close to it a seating wall with about an 18-inch height. That's, works out well for safety, but it's also a practical matter. When you see how much the park has to be dropped just outside of the street, right, avoid in elevation, just to level it up. So this shot from the south looking north on Washington kind of illustrates that. And of course, lots of work going on for the new pavilion building that will house restrooms, a utility room with controls for the water feature, and some of the other electric and water metering equipment. Also, a multi-purpose room that can be used for concessions or private rentals. That's a rendering of it up there at the top photo, and you see the hunk of concrete with all the pipes coming out of it. That is the, those are the footings and foundations for that new pavilion building right in the middle of the park. Two Rivers Rotary, which has been one of the major sponsors in support of the park, with a naming gift for the ice skating loop, is continuing to fundraise in support of the project. That was continued at the 21st Annual Rotary Fundraising Dinner held at Sepia Chapel this past Saturday. All proceeds from the dinner and the fundraising auction, which had some really amazing donated items, will benefit Central Park West 365. You've got a picture there of the crowd gathered. I know we had a number of our city council members in attendance. It was a great evening. Dr. Bob Gall presided over the benefit auction. Mike Mathis, our Park and Rec Director, addressed the gathering, thanking them for their support and sharing some interesting numbers about the economic benefits of quality parks when it comes to property values, and when it comes to attracting families to the community. I was surprised and very honored to be presented a certificate that the local Rotary had designated me through Rotary International as a Paul Harris Fellow recipient in recognition of service to community. So I heartfelt thanks to the Rotary Club on that. That was very cool.
Congratulations to you on that.
Thank you. I was so shocked I was speechless. They said if we didn't know on that, we might have given it to you sooner.
You definitely were speechless. You didn't say a word.
Oh, Betty kind of kept control of the microphone, too. She's a smart lady.
That helped.
But, yeah, outstanding event. Over on the east side, Lincoln Street Reconstruction from 17th to 22nd, a work, a contract awarded by council back in February, and of course, the special assessment hearing was held last regular meeting. Signage went up last week. Tree removal began for those trees that unfortunately are going to have to go away due to the construction activity. The contractor has start laying out, has started laying out the temporary water services. I don't think houses are connected to those just yet, but in recent years, our contract specs have called for, you know, those services that basically get laid over the ground and assure there's no interruption of water. That's really popular when somebody's literally in a lather and the water gets turned off. So this avoids that kind of interruption or other inconveniences. And if you wander over that way, or as these photos illustrate, breaking up and removal of the pavement has started in earnest today. So they got an early start on that. We're hoping that means an early finish. We've got on tonight's agenda the award of contract for the resurfacing of Zlatnik Drive, and from what I hear northeast, if that's a word, it'll be raring to go. Follow-up to a discussion a couple meetings back, we did have a virtual meeting, an online meeting with our Public Works Director, City Planner, and myself, talking with planning staff from the Corps of Engineers Chicago District Office. That was back on March 22nd. Somewhat to our surprise, the Corps staff confirmed that they in fact do have that $200,000 appropriation that we had lobbied for, for a couple of years, to undertake a design deficiency analysis of the harbor here at Two Rivers. Now, that design deficiency analysis is a federal term, but basically, if it can be shown that the fundamental way the harbor is laid out contributes to the building up of the sandy shoals that clog up the harbor every time you turn around, and contribute to the wave action, not just in the channel, but that bounces off the steel sheet piling and really can wreak havoc in the whole interior harbor. If those are related to design deficiencies, and we, I think most of us kind of think they are, that, that's important when it comes to seeking federal funds to correct the situation. So the Corps has the $200,000 for the design deficiency analysis. They anticipate having staff come up sometime in May for a site visit and to learn more about the concerns in the harbor. Bear in mind, from 2017, when the city and the Corps jointly funded a wave mitigation study, that's the photo on the right there that shows one of two Doppler units that got placed at the bottom of the channel, one by the Coast Guard, one at the harbor entrance, to gather wave height data and grain movement for sand and sediments. Since that time, this side of the lake has been moved from the jurisdiction of the Detroit District to the Chicago District. So there's a whole new cast of characters to, to get acquainted with, but frankly, a very positive discussion, and we hope it can get us on a path to some action. And Bill, I know you had raised the issue, we certainly, once we have a date and time nailed down for that visit, we really, as a city, would like to have some of the harbor users here, the commercial fishers, Coast Guard, recreational boaters, folks at Seagull Marina, to, to drive home the point that this harbor's important to us, and it's got some real challenges. We think, you know, part of the Corps, looking at anything like this, is a, an economic analysis. Obviously, we do have some commercial uses of the harbor, notably commercial fishing, that continue. We think, in addition, though, there's also an argument to be made that if a harbor entrance modification makes dredging a less frequent occurrence, because that's mighty expensive when you dredge that harbor, that could help drive any economic argument there as well. So back when that study was done in 2017, they did model several alternatives. One, an offshore rubble mound that would be out beyond the channel opening, boats would have to come in on one or the other sides of it. A rubble mound right where the channel comes right into the steel sheet piling wall at Harborview Park, and then a third one was extending the south pier further out into the lake with a dog leg jogging to the north to break up that wave action that comes straight down the harbor and maybe divert some of the sand movement, which the Corps modeling shows is primarily from south to north. And any, before a big spend is done, hopefully, on any of those, certainly more input from the people that use the harbor is needed. So stay tuned, but we're headed in the right direction there. Questions? You may have seen from a Facebook post, in addition to K-9 Officer Zante, the Police Department will be getting a new, a new addition of a therapy dog donated to be maintained by our, I think our Assistant Chief or one of our officers at no added cost to the city, funded entirely by donations. And this, this is great news, and I know the department's very excited about it. I'd asked Assistant Chief Weiser, who was pretty integral in making these arrangements, if she'd like to share that. Melissa, please, to the mic if you would.
It's bright right here. Yeah, so as the City Manager had said, this is a donated dog in partnership with the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Death Response Team, which is a team that responds throughout the state of Wisconsin for any law enforcement officers that are killed in the line of duty or complete suicide. So in working with that team, we have a partnership already with the Two Rivers Police Department. So somebody reached out and wanted to donate a therapy dog to the leader team, and that that dog would then reside at the department with one of the members. So it's donated, it will be here with us at Two Rivers PD. It's going to be a dog for the entire city, though, so we're hoping it's going to help build rapport and be used at incidents like if victims are in the PD to just be that little calming addition to whatever stressful situation they have going on. For any critical incidents, it can respond out to that. Victim interviews, if we are going to like the Child Advocacy Center, it could go out to any special events in the city, and just be there with officers, because sometimes people think we're unapproachable. So maybe with the dog there, they might want to approach us and talk with us a little bit more. Going out to retirement homes, schools, events at the library, anybody who will have us. We hope to have officers out with the, with the dog, so it's an asset to the whole city. And again, it is funded by our K-9 Fund, which is all donations, so it won't cost us anything.
Awesome. Does it kind of mingle or live with multiple officers, or is there going to be one kind of home for the dog?
Yeah, so it'll have like one main home, but the PD will be another home, so that it can be here during other shifts as well, so second and third shift. And then it'll have multiple officers, so it's not like Zante who's only with that handler. There'll be multiple handlers, so that it can be at different times and different functions.
Very nice.
And it is a golden doodle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think the only other condition would be, we'd really like an introduction at a council meeting when she arrives.
So, yeah, it'll be one of those that are up there in the picture. We just don't know yet, because they go based on personality of who will be the best fit for a therapy dog in the future.
Great job. Great work. Thank you, Assistant Chief. Okay. Also, by way of update, if, if you're somebody that perhaps is carrying a, has been carrying a delinquent utility balance through the winter months, we are approaching April 15, which is the end of the annual moratorium. There are several hundred folks out there in this situation, and we just want to remind them, as our customer service staff does, that Wisconsin's Home Energy Assistance Program is out there to provide assistance with heating costs, electric costs, and energy crises, and folks should really make best efforts to contact that agency. We've got contact information here, both phone and website, because they may be eligible even if they've already received a benefit from the program. And the city will be adhering strictly to the April 15 shut-off. That doesn't mean necessarily, if you don't have the means, you need to pay your bill in full, but at a minimum, you either need to come current or come in in advance and make arrangements for a negotiated installment payment plan. So. That is.
Greg, I think there's also.
Yeah, vouchers like through Human Services, County Human Services. Yeah, yeah. So if people contact Manitowoc County Human Services, I believe they can assist as well. There are a lot of resources out there, and I know from past year's experience, because sometimes folks do make it up to the third floor, maybe if they didn't hear what they wanted to hear at the first floor. You know, if you're not on it already, this is fair warning. Today is April 3rd, and now is the time, because sometimes, sometimes folks put off making those contacts when there is help available. So we encourage that. We aren't here to be in the business of shutting anybody's power or water off. By the same token, it's the city's job to collect on those accounts, otherwise the other rate payers pay the cost, and that's not fair either. Speaking of utility bills, we talked about it in August when we had a record-high Purchase Power Adjustment Clause, and I'll talk about it again tonight. We've talked about it in between, too, but we, for the first time since, I think, May of last year, saw our, in, in March, have seen our Purchase Power Adjustment Clause go into the negative range. This is the time of year when typically, demand is down a bit, we're getting into spring, we're not into the air conditioning demands of summer, so WPPI's costs are less, they're not reaching outside of their long-term contracts as much to meet peak demands. So you look at this chart on the right, it's excerpted, anyone can access these, view them or print them from PSCW's website, Wisconsin Public Service Commission. While our base rate per kilowatt hour is 10.31 cents, and has been that for a while, presently, if you go all, almost all the way to the bottom, you're seeing a reduction of 6/10ths per kilowatt hour. Off that, with a positive adder in recent. Going back to last August, which kind of sticks out, because that was an additional 4.1 cents on top of 10.2 cents, so about a 40% add because of extraordinary costs that were encountered back then, because some of our baseload contract generating supply was offline. There were a couple of coal-fired plants that had unexpected repairs that took them down, and it's also that time of year when you're reaching out there for some of those maybe more expensive sources for peaking power. But we're back in negative territory again, and we'll continue to track this relative to past years. But then, of course, the chart on the left pretty well tracks, and that's also a graphic you can get right off the PSC's website, how that PSC, how that, excuse me, PCAC has trended from about this time last year, with negative adjustments in March, April, and May, peaking in the summer, coming back down in the fall. So just FYI, energy's a big deal these days. And we're glad, quite honestly, that WPPI includes in its portfolio, energy from the Point Beach Nuclear Planet right up the road, as well as the Point Beach Solar Center. Lester Public Library, yet another new initiative at the library. They have been selected to participate in checkout, Wisconsin State Parks at your library, and would like to invite our library director, Jeff Dawson, up, you know him, to give a quick report on this.
Sure. We were honored to be selected as one of the libraries to participate in this program, the statewide program. It was run as a pilot program last summer, and it proved to be very successful. And so they're extending it into this upcoming summer. We plan on checking out day passes. We're going to get between 20 and 40 day passes to distribute this coming summer, beginning in May. So some of the parameters, you can check out the day pass, you have three days to use it. But that gives you access to any state park in the state for the entire day. I think we were selected, even though I wasn't, it wasn't shared with the exact parameters of why we were selected, but our demographics of the community, and I'm sure our proximity to Point Beach State Park. Adam, we talked about this last year.
Yes, we did.
So one of the barriers to this project is the cost, and these day passes are being provided free of charge to the participating libraries. So really looking forward to getting this initiative up and running. We will still have to work out some of the, some of the logistics between staff and our library patrons, but we're looking forward to it this summer.
That's awesome. Kudos to you, because yes, we did talk about this last year. So nice job to you and your staff there, Jeff.
Thanks.
That's such a wonderful state forest right next door, and I'm sure there are families, and especially families with little kids, that perhaps have never been within the confines of the state forests. So thank you. Good work, Lester Library. Just a reminder, one of the city's initiatives this year, the Expanded Grant Program for Tree Planting, by action of the council back in March, I believe it was, adding. adding on to the funding that is traditionally been there from the, through the electric utility, adding some funds from the City Tree Planting Fund to encourage tree planting on private properties. You can, you need to pre-qualify before you run out and buy the tree and expect to get reimbursed. But property owners can qualify for grants to cover up to two thirds of the cost of a new tree, maximum grant of $100 per tree up to three times. So that's max $300. $10,000 budget for the program. Funding first come, first served, and you need to apply and to get pre-qualified by May 1. As of early last week, there were, Gina down at Electric told me there were 11 applications received so far. Brian, I don't know if you know if that's changed at all, but we're at least at 11. Yep, which beats the heck out of where we've been in past years. So continue to spread the word, there's about a month to qualify. Councilmember Darla Leclair had mentioned the Front Yard Vegetable Garden Program for 2023. Just remind people, that was been approved by council and as Darla said, capped at 20 residences. And you can call the Public Works Office. Oh, shoot, that's, the correct number is 5539 on the sign. Disregard what the narrative to the right says, which the city manager typed a few minutes ago. We'll get that corrected. 5539, the friendly folks at Public Works Engineering. And I think this is pretty much what the yard signs are going to look like, Darla.
Yes.
Yep. Lisa and I did talk today about dropping the 2023, just in case it continues as a pilot into future years. So they could reappear. Yep. Also, and it might be the place where you want to buy your tree or trees, whether you participate in the city grant program or not, the Vanderbro Arboratum over on Lincoln Avenue, Highway 42, is again this year doing their fundraiser spring tree and shrub sale. You can go to their website. They offer a nice variety of trees and shrubs. And you've got about four more weeks to order out there. They order trees and shrubs in quantity. I think the Arboratum planted about 750 trees last year. So might be worth looking into for some of your home landscaping needs. Hey, it is Good Friday, this coming Friday, April 7. And the Two Rivers Fire Department, firefighters local 423, will again present the most awesome fish boil in northeast Wisconsin. That's 3 to 7 p.m. over at the fire station. You can dine in the equipment bays or you can pick up your fish boil to go. Tickets are available at the fire station, online, or at the event. $15 for adults, kid's meal with a smaller portion, or hot dog and chips if the kid isn't into fish, and beverages, and really great desserts. I'll vouch for those, really great desserts also available. So check it out. I don't remember the numbers. I don't know that you would either, Acting Chief Murak, but several hundred people served last year. Lot of, will drive up be an option again this year? I know we're past the whole COVID thing, but. Okay, we'll find out and we'll share, but it's a great fish boil. Upcoming events through Parks and Rec and the Optimists, Breakfast with the Bunny over at the Community House, Saturday, April 8. And then that is in the morning. I don't see the time here. But then the Optimus Club Easter Egg Hunt this coming Saturday, 11 a.m. over at Neshota Park. And it doesn't, knock wood, it doesn't look like the kids will be looking for eggs in the snow this year, which always nice. The grass may not be that green, but they won't be in the snow. Darla mentioned earlier, Main Street's Spring Promotion Fool Around Downtown. That's been going on since last Saturday, and it continues until next week, Monday. You can earn chances of prizes, including $200 in Cool City Cash by visiting downtown businesses. And we know that universe of downtown businesses expanded by three or four this past weekend. And I know several council members were circulating among those businesses. And these are exciting times downtown, a lot of good things happening. That is my, oh, that's my report for tonight. We didn't have any slides about legislative update, but I just would note on your agenda, Senator Andre Jacques will be here in the City Hall Council Chambers two weeks from tonight, today, on April 17. Senator Jacques will be doing a community listening session from 3:30 p.m. to 5 p.m. And then at the council meeting that evening, first thing on the agenda after any public hearings, I guess, we will have both Senator Jacques and our state representative Shay Sortwell here. I've asked upfront for them to please be ready to talk about the 2023 to 27 biannual state budget and other issues of importance to Two Rivers. Again, out of that budget, probably the biggest thing is shared revenues. We know what the governor's proposed. We know that legislative leadership in both houses has, I haven't seen specifics, but they've at least expressed strong support for an increase in the state's funding commitment to fund local services, especially in the public safety area. We know that the amount of shared revenues that Two Rivers gets, while it's a big chunk, about 38% of our general fund budget, is also less in real dollar terms, about $200,000 less than it was in the year 2000. Shared revenues was over 10% of state general fund spending 25 years ago. It's under 5% today. So, and you might have heard, they have a $7 billion surplus. And part of giving it back could also mean giving more to help support communities that operate under tax levy restrictions and are stuck with the least popular tax on the planet to pay our bills. So, you know, the drill, we'll be reaching out, asking for some specifics in advance to both Andre and Shay, and appreciate their being here. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. On to number 10, which is the consent agenda. Under A, we have a presentation of minutes. There are, oh, yes.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I skipped over that. And there was.
It was because the invited guest wasn't here.
Kenny Schillcox. We had it on the agenda, but nobody, Kenny didn't know he was invited. I'm sorry, thank you. And indeed, that's just a teaser, he'll be here in two weeks.
I figured that's why we skipped over it, he wasn't here.
I apologize, I meant to highlight that, thank you. We'll probably introduce him before Shay and Andre, even though you'll be welcome to stay. Thank you.
All right, so under A, we have a presentation of minutes. There are one, it's a city council meeting of March 6, 2023. And a city council March 20, 2023. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt those minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are four. And the recommended action there is a motion to receive and file. Under C, we have three. There's an application for a new combination Class B beer, Class B liquor license application for the period of April 4, 2023 to June 30, 2023 for Montana Rays Pub LLC at 1713 East Street. Montana Anderson is the agent doing business as Montana Rays Pub. The recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. Under two, we have an application for a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license application for the period of April 27 through the 29, 2023, from 6 p.m. to 11 p.m. for Harderama at 1710 West Park Street. Recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. And finally, under three, we have another application for a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license application for the period of May 4 through the 6, 2023, from 6 p.m. to 11 p.m. for Harderama at 1710 West Park Street. The recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. For the whole consent agenda, the recommended action is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second? Jeff, thank you very much. Council discussion. See, none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you very much. On to 11, which are the city council formal items. Under A, we have a sex offender residency appeal. The recommended action is a motion to deny the request waiver based on the recommendation by the Assistant Police Chief. And we're going to tip that off to Greg, and then I believe Assistant Chief Weisner is going to fill in the rest of that, right?
Yes, we do have the applicant present seeking the waiver on the city ordinance regarding sex offender registry. And council certainly can, I'm sure would welcome any comments the applicant wishes to offer. I'll let Chief Miner tee it up. You've got in your packets both notice that went out to the applicant about the receipt of his residency appeal and tonight's consideration by council. You have the letter stating the appeal. And you also have a memo and recommendation from the Assistant Police Chief regarding this application. Ben, over to you.
Yeah, so just to give you guys a kind of a heads up on how this went. Normally, we will receive from the state any sort of notification when a sex offender moves to a different location. We do a thorough background into that immediately. So in this case, Assistant Chief at the time, also Detective Lieutenant Weisner, will always follow up on those to make sure that we know what address they're staying at, that the details are correct, and then look into whether or not they fit within our ordinance. In this case, the male that's here today, Mr. Beaman, did not fit into that. Therefore, he was denied being able to live in the city. Following that, he had a brief conversation with Melissa where she would have explained the variance details, but that didn't occur. I did speak with his girlfriend later on that day after she reached out to our department wishing to speak with me. I made sure to have contact with her and I explained that situation. She did explain that they were requesting a variance under the circumstances. She had just recently purchased a house within Two Rivers. And I explained, like I typically do, that I empathize with that situation. However, we do stand very firm on our sex offender ordinance. In this case, he had not met the criteria, and we stand firm on that. We also provided, or I provided you with Assistant Chief Weisner's recommendation, which I stand by, and she is also here to explain further details if you have any questions.
Okay. All right, so hopefully everyone has read your packet and you will have the letters of which chief is referring to. So with that said, I would give Mr. Beaman an opportunity to speak and/or his girlfriend if they wish to join us at the podium.
Hi. Greetings, City Council. I have been a long-term resident of Two Rivers. I have moved on and around the state of Wisconsin. And I graduated from Two Rivers Washington High School, the old school. So it's the really cool building in 94. I moved here from Tawani County in 92 and started my junior year here. I graduated from this spectacular city, if I haven't made that clear. I resided in the community on and off for years, and the years I did not reside here, I was, while I was in college, I worked in law, worked in prestigious environmental company, and I worked for the federal government. I am writing to you, I have a letter I wrote on you, we just ran out of ink. I'm writing this to demonstrate my faith in Patrick Beaman's honesty and his vow to the residents of the city of Two Rivers not to be a reoffender. I believe Patrick not to reoffend under any sexual charge. I'm under the understanding this variance has applied, he has applied for, is based on the likelihood of a registered sex offender to reoffend. In this case, the likelihood is far-fetched. He has not had any other offenses related to any potential sexual occurrence or charges. Therefore, this is not a repeat offender for, as written by the city of Two Rivers statutes. His original case is from 2007 with a 16-year-old who posed as a 19-year-old. The offense, Patrick may have trusted a fellow Army person he served with who vouched for the 16-year-old, saying she was 19. Now, we all know that girls, when they wear makeup, they look different ages. You can't tell. Well, so this so-called 19-year-old falsified her information to achieve her goals. Who do you know that will card a person they want to date? In this general population, most people go by appearance, an appearance that a person looks close in age and has a similar personality and interest. Also, a 21-year-old dating a 19-year-old is only two years apart. We have, this is a common age difference when dating. Patrick can't help when his friends set him up to get in trouble. He has plans to reside with me at 1233rd Street, Two Rivers. And as of now, he is homeless and has no mailing address other than my address at 1233rd Street, Two Rivers. If you need to prove us wrong, I have cameras up to prevent harassment from the guy I had a restraining order against from a few years ago. Patrick has been taking care of himself, trying to be an outstanding father for his two young boys, two and four years old. He was recently granted visitation.
I was recently granted every other weekend for me to have them. They currently live in Dade County.
He has been taking great strides in surrounding himself with quality community members in Manitowoc and Two Rivers. His plan to live in the city of Two Rivers, I think, is a valid and awesome choice for him and the two boys. The idea of him staying in Manitowoc may steer him closer to a chance of reoccurring to any other offense when he runs into people from his past. He's trying to better himself and make a life with no trouble. Patrick is not on probation and will be off the registry in 2033.
2036. They messed up on the registry. I had to call and get corrected.
There is some stance to this old charge and not reoffending again, if you. So I'm asking to think about it and to consider somebody that has not reoffended, that has not, had got pulled into a case that he may not have been able to control completely.
I also would like.
Thank you.
I would also like to say that I'm a disabled American veteran. I, after 16 long years, I, by applying through the VA, finally got my VA benefits last year. I am also seeking treatment through psychology, a psych interest and therapist to work on my PTSD, depression, anxiety. And I'm just trying to be around people that actually helps me be a better person, not drag me down like some of the people I know in Manitowoc. I'm just trying to make a better life for my kids. Like she said, I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old. Those are, they are my worlds, and I will literally die for them because, and I've never felt that way until they were born. Unfortunately, I went through a divorce. Got very complicated in my marriage, short marriage, but we're working it out through the courts. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Where did the offense take place? Am I reading Manitowoc, is that correct?
No, the offense took place in Cleveland.
Cleveland, okay, Manitowoc County, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so right now, council cannot really talk amongst themselves until we have some kind of a motion on the floor. So until we get a motion, we can't really discuss amongst ourselves. But once we get that motion, we can discuss among ourselves. And we can obviously invite Assistant Chief or the chief up here if we have any further questions that we need answered. So someone needs to make some kind of a motion.
I'll make the motion to deny the requested waiver based on the recommendation by the Assistant Police Chief.
Okay, Bonnie made the motion, and do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Council discussion. These are always tough. I mean, I mean, we do have an ordinance, and we're trying to work very diligently to stand behind that ordinance because it's what protects our city, I guess. And we all had input in on that, everybody. I think that's up here because I think that ordinance took place sometime within the last year. No, two years ago, maybe, huh? So most of us had parts of that ordinance, maybe with the exception of councilmembers Steckmesser and Petrie, who are newer, that may have come just after you guys. This is a little tough. But again, we we need to make sure that we have a strong opinion as to how we want to see our city kind of move forward. And do we have an ordinance on the books just to have it or do we have it to somewhat follow? I guess that's what we're up for here. Anyone want to talk about it? Darla.
I think something like this of this magnitude, we really have to honor the way our ordinances are written. We have other ordinances that, you know, you can kind of play around with. With this one, it's pretty crystal clear. I just got to say that on the March twenty-fourth letter, it does have, it doesn't mention several problems that have cropped up since two thousand and seven. And that I find really kind of worrisome. I'm not going to go into detail with all due respect to the to the, you know, Mr. Beaman. But I I I have to agree with Bonnie and Bill. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Scott.
I'm going to abstain from voting because Paul and I actually graduated high school together.
Okay.
From ninety-four, so I will not be voting.
Okay. Thank you for giving us a heads up on that. That's important information. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we're gonna send this to a roll call vote. Amanda.
Anish Malunas.
Aye.
Adam Muske.
Aye.
Jeff Dulkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Steckmesser.
All right. Thank you very much for coming. Sorry about the outcome, but we do have a pretty, pretty big ordinance that we worked very hard on, I want to say about two years ago or so. So I apologize, but we're gonna stand behind that. But thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on to B, which is an award of bid for repaving Zlatnik Drive, seventeenth to Pierce. A twenty-twenty-three capital budget project budgeted at a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The recommended action is a motion to award the contract to Northeast Asphalt Incorporated in its low qualifying bid in the amount of eighty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, looking for some background, Greg.
Fairly self-explanatory, though, as is noted, the funding for this more than enough is included in the current budget. This was a carryover project from twenty twenty-two. There were some concerns about trying to coordinate it with the Seventeenth Street reconstruction on the east side that took place last year. Northeast Wisconsin, as is, or excuse me, Northeast Asphalt, as is often the case with asphalt bids in this neck of the woods, was the only bidder. It is within the engineer's cost estimate. You know, their engineer's cost estimate was ninety-four-seven. And what we anticipate, even with an allowance for fifteen percent for engineering and contingency, this being under a hundred thousand dollars, you see there with engineering and contingency, ninety-nine, three oh four. Frankly, we budgeted a little high on this one. I think there was a change in the scope along the way. It was clearly identified, though, in this year's budget as being from seventeenth to Pierce. So this will get you up to the middle part in the Shota Park where there was a resurfacing project from Pierce Street North oh, within the last four or five years. Happy to recommend approval. Our Public Works Director, City Engineer, Matt Heckinlibel, happy to answer any questions.
All right, looking for a motion on this.
I'll make a motion.
Second by Tracy. All right, so we got Jeff and then Tracy. Uh, any council discussion on this one? Looks like a pretty good deal to me, quite honestly.
Do you know what it was last, when it was bid last year? I'm just curious if it's lower than.
We didn't bid it last year. We budgeted for it and then sort of hit the pause button to see, frankly, to see if Seventeenth Street had wrapped up a little earlier. We might have gone ahead and bid it last year. But no, we don't have a price, a bid price for comparison there. Yep, I should have mentioned too, it's not really germane to the contract, but the special assessment hearing on this will be coming up one minute, two weeks on the seventeenth, so.
All right, seeing then no other further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. On to C, award of bid for replacement of private water and sanitary sewer laterals on Lincoln Street in conjunction with street reconstruction project. The recommended action is a motion to award the contract to Van Wright Plumbing Incorporated of Green Bay, Wisconsin, in its low qualifying bid in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Background on this, Greg.
Yeah, well, number one, given the sequencing, you sure better approve it because this is to replace the private side sanitary sewer and water laterals for the Lincoln Street Reconstruction Project because of the federal and state funding for, notably for the private water laterals and the borrowing the city's doing from state sources with principal forgiveness for the, no, I take that back. The borrowing we're doing for the laterals is necessary to bid this as a separate contract. You can see that the good news is there were five bidders. Their bids generally were in a pretty tight band from, with the supplemental from two hundred twenty thousand to two forty-eight, two eighty-one, two eighty-two. And the the high bid was kind of an outlier at three fifty-eight. This is, as I understand it, within the cost estimate. Yeah, the pre-bid cost estimate was three hundred eleven, six twenty-five. Van Wright has performed this kind of work for the city in the past and has a very good track record. So you have the staff recommendation and the town and country engineering, our consultants, to award the contract as noted to Van Wright.
All right, looking for a motion on this.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Darla. Second by Scott. Any council discussion on this one? Seeing none, this is a all in favor votes, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. On to D, resolution amending the twenty-twenty-three Streets and City Hall capital budgets to transfer funds needed for City Hall HVAC control system project from Streets Capital Project where costs have come in below budget. The recommended action is motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution and Greg can speak all about this one.
You have the resolution in your packets. There was a correction to it, which is, I'll explain in a minute. It's on the, so the one we're asking you to vote on is in front of you tonight. We've recognized for several years the need to address replacement of the HVAC control system here at City Hall. That component of the HVAC system, it dates back thirty years to the nineteen ninety-three renovation. It's a pneumatic system. There aren't too many pneumatic systems left out there. So, you know, each of these thermostats, if they actually work, which many of them don't. You hear that hissing sound, it's because it is a pneumatic system. It would be replaced with electronic controls and a related overall system control system. We have gotten a proposal from Schaus Mechanical, met with them today with our building maintenance supervisor. We want to see that refined. We may have the ability to look at another cost estimate from another vendor. Schaus's preliminary estimate and their proposal to us is three hundred six thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. So it's a big project. Uh, I've talked with the city attorney, will provide Jack some more information, but preliminarily, this doesn't appear to meet the statutory requirement as a, as a public works construction project. We're not going to have a new heating system. We are going to have a control system that actually would control the temperatures in the building. So as a first step, I would like council to at least bless a budget amendment that would make resources available in an amount commensurate with what we think it's going to take. I've learned a little bit about the system. I always knew it was complicated. Twenty, the, with a technician from Schaus, our, our building maintenance director, Kevin Kriesic, checked on about thirty thermostats in the building. Most of those were found to be non-functioning. Some of the flexible pneumatic tubing actually shatters if you touch it because it's so old. They are tied, the thermostats, which there's about a hundred and thirty in the building, are tied into eighty-seven hot water control valves. There's a hot water that covers the outer perimeter of the building. The, they also are tied into fifty-two cooling-only variable air volume boxes that control the flow of chilled air and fresh air through the the air system. So you've got perimeter heat that's hot water. Actually, the whole system is hot water, but you've got air blowing through the the system here. We have been operating since last Tuesday with the boiler turned off. It's not too bad in here, it's a little cool. But if you go back into late February and into March, we had temperatures in some of the work areas in the building in the eighties and have had our maintenance guy going around manually turning off sections of the perimeter heat. And any of these department heads, I think, can speak, plus that fire, they they're over in a building with a fairly simple heating and cooling system. But they can speak to some of the issues we've had, not just creature comfort, but the productivity of our personnel. So I want to provide more information before a contract award recommendation brings, comes to council. What I am recommending is a first step, and it does require an extraordinary vote every time you amend the budget, two-thirds, as opposed to a simple majority, to reallocate funds to make clear there's the availability to tackle this project. So the amendment in front of you would reduce, you might remember back on March sixth when the council gave some direction about this year's borrowing, that we came to you and said, there's about six hundred fifty thousand dollars in the Harbor Master Plan Implementation Fund we haven't spent as yet. That's proposed for the Hamilton property acquisition. Let's reduce this year's borrowing by six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Three twenty-five of that reduction was in the Streets Fund. So that's why you show the current budget, at least as amended on March sixth, has a transfer from other funds at three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Proposing to take that down to thirty-seven thousand dollars, which would still fund the Zlatnik Repaving Project you just approved at an estimated hundred thousand. That's just a couple thousand above the estimate with fifteen percent for engineering and contingency. It would also provide the three hundred thousand dollars needed inclusive of engineering and contingency for the street concrete pavement component of the Lincoln Street project. So happily, kind of like at home, sometimes when you run into an extra expense, you look around and say, is there something we budgeted for that came in below budget? Otherwise, we'd be here maybe talking about some interim internal financing because we really do need to address this. So that would reduce the transfer into street construction from three hundred twenty-five thousand to thirty-seven thousand. A reduction of two hundred eighty-eight thousand. There's two hundred eighty-eight thousand coming out of those two identified street projects. Revenues into Fund Four Fifty-nine, City Hall Capital would go up by two hundred eighty-eight thousand. And where I messed up on what went out to you on Friday, other improvements, line item in the City Hall Equipment Budget or City Hall Capital Budget was not budgeted at zero, it was budgeted at a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars, which included things like the new electronic signs in Central Park, repair work on the sandstone pillars on the front of the building, which are falling apart, couple of new pieces of, a couple of new software programs for inspections and mapping. Those are all in that budget as adopted by council. That stands at one thirty-five. Adding two eighty-eight to that would give you the total indicated, which I didn't write down on my sheet, but, oh, I'm sorry, four hundred twenty-three thousand would be the amended amount. So apologize for that error. We still want to do some follow-up homework and we're getting a more detailed proposal from Schaus as well as talking about possible alternatives. But would appreciate council reflecting a commitment that the budgeted dollars are there through this amendment.
Good, so looks like pretty much just our savings on Zlatnik and Lincoln Street will provide this two hundred eighty-eight thousand. There's no extra borrowing. We're not taking away from any other project. We're not adding to debt. We're not saying, hey, we're not paying for this or that to make this happen. We're pretty much just what we've over budgeted. Um, I know if you've been in here all winter long, which we have, it's very hot here a lot of times. And last summer, we were sweating, or you know what's off because it was extraordinarily hot. So I I think this is a good move. It's not comfortable and we're only here for a short amount of time. Imagine doing all the work in here.
I always hate to bring things that appear last minute. We were hoping to squeeze a little more life out of this system. Over the years, we've replaced boilers, we've replaced chillers. It looks like from the inspection that was done, most of the dampers in the system are in good shape. But when it comes to those thermostats that are pretty much placebos on the wall right now and the valves in the air system and the the water, hot water system, they're supposed to control, we've got some real problems there.
And we're at thirty-plus years old on that system as well, so. Eventually, it's going to come due. So looking for a motion to approve this budget amendment. Thank you, Jeff, second by Scott. Council discussion. Yes, Jeff.
I think we should hold off on this until we find out what's happening with shared revenue, just in case we're anymore. When you can be allocated somewhere else. System is still working, granted, it's not perfect, but it is still working.
Well, this is ten-year borrowing that we're talking about as well, not general fund as far as adding employees or adding healthcare. It's pretty much borrowing for projects is all. Our shared revenue goes into our general fund, which provides employees, health insurance, gas for the vehicles, office supplies, stuff like that.
Money, money.
Right.
We do have money available. I I wouldn't hazard a guess right now to quantify it, but I expect there's some energy, logically, there's some energy savings to be realized from this because heat in the building, when it's already too hot outside, or heating it to eighty-five degrees in the winter ain't efficient. Freezing or alternatively boiling in the summer. The other thing is just, again, I can't measure it, but it it isn't doing wonders for employee productivity. So again, I I respect, share the concerns Jeff has. I think those are operating budget issues. We've always been very prudent in our capital reinvestment. It ain't going to get any better by deferring it.
Tracy.
Actually, we're not just the productivity, but health and safety as well. You know, you can't have employees passing out from. Pretty bad if my police department couldn't respond because they're sick.
Chief may have a brief comment for you as well. Speaking for the department this year, twenty-four seven and out on the streets too, but here.
I'm speaking from the department, but also as a father and husband, which I I know everybody deals with. I don't like to spend money either. And Jeff, you're absolutely right that technically it is working. However, unlike at home where I can adjust the thermostat, this is either on or off, literally on or off. I've worked with Kevin numerous times because of all the complaining within not only the building, but our department. I've had to see our secretaries working with winter coats on and with mittens and gloves. And they're supposed to be typing. I've argued that at some point I'm going to have to put a burning barrel in our PD, which I don't think would be a popular choice. When you talk about safety, Tracy, you're absolutely right, especially in the police department where we need to keep it secure. As recent as about two weeks ago, I was operating with our PD at seventy-six degrees with the windows wide open, all the windows, snow blowing in. And so when you're talking about efficiency, that's clearly an issue. It's not efficient, it's not safe. And I listened to other department heads and I would agree with them. Morale is at an all-time low. In the summertime, it was the opposite. In the summer, people were either freezing. We had temperatures in the forties at times in the lower corner of the building, our break room, so people couldn't even take a break down there. Literally freezing, so they're they're carrying blankets. So in the, in the summertime, we had people actually at times where we'd turn the chillers on and then they have to wear winter coats and stuff. And then other times it's eighty degrees in the wintertime. And now I've personally had t-shirt and my shoes off and so have other people within our department. That is the seriousness of it. And I know this goes for Amanda in her corner of the building. It goes for finance. I travel all through during the day and I talk to all these people, so it's not just them. And it's also unfair that Kevin has to take the brunt of all this. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, Amanda.
Jeff Dulkey. Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Anish Malunas.
Aye.
Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Muske.
Aye.
Certainly a goal to be back at the next meeting with some additional pricing. Certainly a goal to be back at the next meeting with some additional pricing information. Just if I could comment a little more, I'm not inclined to see it being real wise to go out and spend. I'll pull a number out of the thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars to develop full-blown engineering specs in in order to get bids on this. But we we have had some discussions, at least with having an HVAC consultant look at it to do a gut check on the proposed pricing. And again, maybe look at another alternative. I'm. I want to make sure we're spending the public's money wisely, but honestly, Shouse is probably the only mechanical contractor in the county capable of handling a system of this scope and complexity. And we have a long-term service relationship there. And whoever upgrades the system, I want that to also be a company that's somewhere pretty handy that we can be calling on them for the servicing needs. So we want to spend the money wisely, but to back up and be able to do a full-blown bid set of bid specs on this, I think, would be damaging in terms of cost and timing. So we need to get this done, ideally on a shoulder season, spring and or fall, not at the height of the heating or cooling season. So thank you. Thank you for your support on it, and we'll we'll be back real soon.
Greg.
Sir.
Do you know who installed the system to begin with?
That Van somebody. I believe they're out of business now. But Shouse has for twenty-five years plus been doing maintenance on the system, did do the chiller replacements, the boiler replacements. Again, I'm not here to be their their marketing department, but they've got, when it comes to dealing with systems, they've got a level of sophistication. My understanding, though, the folks that installed, designed and installed the original system are no longer in business.
All right, that brings us to E. It's a proclamation of Arbor Day twenty twenty-three. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the proclamation. Greg?
Two Rivers is Tree City USA and the National Arbor Day Foundation. In order for to re-up that designation as a tree city needs to see an application, which is submitted through the Parks and Recreation Department, showing that the city meets certain criteria as far as spending for tree planting and tree maintenance. We meet that pretty handily, and also that there's an annual Arbor Day proclamation and tree planting event. Mike, do you have any further background? If if council doesn't mind, this would be a good chance to talk about the plant tree planting and maybe an update on what's happening with that urban forestry grant through DNR. Totally impromptu, but our department heads are good for that.
Good evening, everyone. We will be having a tree planting activity on Arbor Day over at Xander Park. We have funds from the the West Foundation Grant that we received through the library to be able to plant trees there. So we'll have trees handy for that. And then Scott All and I, from the Engineering Department, are going to be meeting this very soon to talk about tree planting on the streets. We've got a lot of tree requests coming in for donations right now, and that'll be going hopefully focused a lot on the new playground over at Nishota Park. Oh, the DNR grant. The forester for the grant that we received from DNR, Urban Forestry Grant, will be starting her inventory work here in late April. She wanted to wait until she had all the snow cover off so she could see the base of the trees. And so that work will take several months for her to inventory all the street trees in town and the primary trees in like active areas of parks. So she's going to be able to go assess species, the quality of the tree, the health of the tree, all those different types of things, and then help us kind of map out our strategy for dealing with ash trees and really managing our forests. So yeah, a lot to come on. We need to place a tree order here pretty soon, actually, so.
I think we're having discussion tomorrow with with Blake from the Central Park Project because there are like ten. Sorry, twenty, I think, new deciduous trees to go in over at Central Park.
Yeah, there's quite a few new trees, a wide variety of species that'll be going into Central Park. And so the landscaping company that they'll likely use will be meeting with us and the landscape architect tomorrow to hash out kind of final details about getting those trees in place at Central Park. So right now, it's very bare over there. It's going to look nice again come spring.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All right, looking for a motion on this.
We'll make a motion to waive the reading and adopt the proclamation, please.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Second by Bill. Council discussion. Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto F. Resolution amending the twenty twenty-three industrial park development capital budget to provide funding for an emergency replacement of a loading dock leveller at city-owned industrial incubator at fourteen twenty-nine A Wentecor Court. Recommended action, motion to amend the budget to transfer twelve thousand from Fund two ninety, which I believe is act dev, right? Correct? Okay, we'll go over to Greg for the rest of the background.
We I I did some more checking on the budget, and we have a last-minute course adjustment on that one too, if you don't mind. The the city is the owner of two industrial park or industrial buildings you might be familiar with off on Wentecor Court off of Fourteenth Street. Our tenants over there are GT Machine and Flavor Hut. GT occupies the larger of the two buildings. It's ten, I forget, ten, twelve thousand square feet. The city annually realizes significant revenue from the rental of the two properties, and that supports some basic maintenance under the Fund four seventeen budget. We also take money out of that fund that goes to the general fund in support of city operations and Fund two ninety economic development, two ninety-one actually, in support of economic development activities. Last year, there was some repairs done with some welding on the dock leveller at fourteen twenty-nine A GT Machines Building. That was buying time, and we were told at the time that that dock leveller is about thirty years old. It's obsolete. It did fail within the last week or two. Elizabeth was contacted by the folks over at GT Machine. They've got a quote for replacement of the dock leveller at eleven, about eleven thousand five hundred dollars, eleven thousand four ninety. That didn't include additional electric conduit that might be necessary. So we are recommending an amendment to provide twelve thousand dollars in Fund four fifty-one under capital outlay for this. Understand, in that fund, we typically budget a fairly modest amount, three thousand dollars this year for minor repairs that might be needed to either one of those buildings. This goes beyond the scope of that, and it's it's really integral to GT's operation. I realize I just misspoke to that docks about forty years old. So Elizabeth would have any additional details? The change I did make, and sorry, Adam, I counsel, this was kind of the last minute on Friday, looking at Fund four seventeen, rather than transferring money in from the two ninety fund, recommending simply spending down some of the available fund balance in Fund four seventeen. At budget time, we were projecting that this fund would end twenty twenty-two with, I want to say, thirty-eight thousand dollars, thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand dollars in it. Twenty, sorry, twenty-five or twenty-eight. Indeed, we ended the year about ten thousand dollars better than what we were expecting at budget time. So this would leave a budget of, excuse me, a balance, if all goes according to Hoyle, this year of at least twenty-five thousand in that fund at year end or right about where we were projecting we'd be at the end of twenty-three.
And with this taken out?
With this taken out, yeah.
All right, looking for a motion on that.
I make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. Second by Tim. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote, and this is amending our budget as well, so this is a super majority.
Six votes required.
Yep. All right. Roll call vote. Amanda.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimounis?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
All right, thank you. Onto G finally. Consider authorizing the hiring of one additional full-time firefighter paramedic to help meet staffing needs in light of an anticipated shift vacancy due to employee medical leaves. Recommended action, motion to authorize the additional staff person, Assistant Chief, I believe, yeah.
I'll tee it up real quick as as Dave's on his way up to the mic. Every year at budget time in recent years, we've pointed out, our fire department has bare bones staffing. And if everything falls just right, we'll be okay. We still end up spending a lot of money for overtime because our department runs on call-in from off-duty of our regular personnel, given our staffing levels, which this memo speaks to and the chief can speak to. This year, Dave came to me last week and said, we've got a situation where we have one employee off for what is likely to be an extended family medical leave situation. We're aware of one other situation that will be impacting one additional position with an FMLA leave later in the year. It, to maintain minimum staffing of four when your shifts, other than the day shift, Monday through Friday, consist of five full-time employees, is mighty tough. You throw in a couple of people, maybe more, a couple right now, being on extended family medical leave, it gets a whole lot more complicated. That has dollar implications for the budget. It also has implications for the staff. We we run pretty hard with the amount of overtime that they work. I'm never fond of coming and recommending more people, but as you, if you look at the numbers here in terms of the current year budget, I'll just go to the bottom of the memo we distributed. Savings from overtime avoided. Assuming a May one hire, that would mean a very expedited recruitment hiring process. But through September eight, which is the earliest, we expect that one of those employees may return. We're projecting some savings there just shy of thirty-six thousand. I'm sorry, just shy of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Not a savings we're proud of, but we have a vacancy in the chief position. And the fact is, that has been vacant already for four going on five months this year. There was a modest added increment of salary for the acting chief. We are spending a little bit more on some administrative support services from one of our paid-on calls, who's a retired former Manitowoc chief. But netting out those additional expenses, we're saving about seventy-five hundred dollars a month net through that vacancy. We hope that vacancy goes away real soon, but at least speaking for this budget year, five months is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The anticipated offset to overtime expenses and the savings from the chief vacancy total just over seventy-four thousand dollars. An entry level new hire, assuming family coverage and adding in Wisconsin retirement and Medicare. Remember, firefighters don't get Social Security. They get just WERS, is about sixty-one thousand. So I can honestly say, given what we're dealt for this year, this budget year, we got it covered. That begs the question of next year. We know next year, we're looking at some expense factors. No surprise there. But as I pointed out in my memo, I I don't have a great crystal ball there, but keep in mind, costs for the balance of this year are covered. If it's if our staffing in the fire department stays at this increased rate for next year, we can talk about some realistic overtime savings compared to what we nominally normally budget. We may, and I, but that in all caps, may see an increase in shared revenue next year. Certainly hopeful about that. Don't want to spend that before it comes. We could, may very well see another vacancy arise in the department from someone leaving, someone retiring between now and next year. And otherwise, continuing to support this position can add to the list of tough decisions to be made for next year's budget. But we know right now, we got a challenge staring us in the face. And to provide coverage and keep the community safe, we need people. With that, I'll shut up and let the chief address it or answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Greg. Greg has got exactly right. Right now, we're at a crossroads for operations. We're we're looking at not cutting services, but there's times where we just don't have the services because we don't have the staff to come in for overtime. We don't have the staff. When a shift is at bare minimum at four, we're constantly paying overtime back because we can't preclude staff to be off. We still have to honor their vacations and their days off, so we have to fill that with overtime. We do have cost savings during the week where myself and B C K guess will cover the shifts during the day. But we still have to cover that fifteen hours at night. So when we came up with this, we looked at all the weekend shifts, and we looked at the night shifts and all the hours and gave the numbers to Greg, and it came up to be pretty much a wash, I think, is when you really look at it. But I'm just looking at keeping the same services that we've provided for many, many years and to should say disappoint the citizens of Two Rivers. I want to meet their expectations and have the correct staffing on. I don't want to be sending fire engines out with two people on them because we don't have staff.
In a perfect world, and we don't live in a perfect world. You well, you well know that. You know, I'd I'd love to see one more person per shift. That ain't happening unless something big happens on the revenue front. But there is the flexibility within terms of the collective bargaining agreement to use this, to use an added staff position if authorized as, I'll I'll call it a utility person in terms of scheduling. There are provisions for advanced notice. You can't say, well, you know, oops, you thought you're off tomorrow. You're working tomorrow as as a regularly scheduled day. But if we know we've got a vacancy that's going to run for several weeks on a shift due to to a medical leave, that employee can be assigned there if that shift gets back up to strength. But there's even a vacation, if you know well enough in advance, coming on another shift. The expectation is this person, who also would be at the bottom of the ladder on seniority, would be filler to to optimize scheduling and to minimize overtime.
And this is past practice for us. We've done this a number of times before to cover for overtime. Unfortunately, through attrition, we've we've lost a position, but it's helped us financially.
And I'm not saying if if another vacancy happened in the department that I wouldn't be saying, well, don't fill it. Let's really, it looks like everybody's healthy right now. Let's hold on tight. I don't like that, but that's that's reality for where we are with our budget. It's that tight, and you all know that as well as I do, as well as the chief does. But at this point in time, if we can hopefully expedite filling that vacancy, it could do some real good. We're not here asking for a budget amendment, but in approving the budget, the council also approves authorized staffing levels. And we're at the level of eighteen authorized positions presently. This would take it to nineteen. Any questions for me?
Stay there just in case one comes up, just in case. We'll take a motion to hopefully accept this.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Jeff. So we got a first by Tracy, a second by Jeff. Council discussion.
I know one thing I'm worried about is just employee burnout. You know, I mean, even with this extra.
That's an excellent point, and it's something that's been discussed frequently by us. In fact, we we received a grant from the federal government for burnout mitigation. So we are very, very fortunate to receive this grant, and it's a wellness grant, so it's going to mitigate a burnout with our firefighter paramedics, and it's also going to pay for the healthcare if needed. So we're very fortunate to get. They're running, they're running all night. Like I, like I've always said, you guys are welcome to come and visit us at the fire station. And it goes without saying, as the staffing has gone down by us, our call down has gone up. And not all the calls are during the day. Back to where I've been here, we've had three calls.
Inon Personnel and Finance Committee, the last two years, I've, from then Chief Denzine, has always in those two years, he has asked to increase his employees by three, one for each shift. And seeing the overtime, which we all see within our packets, there is a big overtime in the fire department, and it's easy to sit here and say, hey, let's cut costs, let's cut costs, which I think the majority of us on here want to do. It's another thing to tell a family to wait for an ambulance to come from Manitowoc because we don't have any staffing as one of their loved ones, you know, sit there lifeless. And that's a real concern. Again, you could be down to three people on a shift if if we don't approve this three people. That's what an ambulance goes out with. That's what one ambulance goes out with is three. That would leave the house empty.
Good question. You have a skeleton crew, and let's say that, you know, two of the four are ill and can't come in. Do you have some sort of a an agreement with other communities that they might have somebody who could step in to help our department out?
We've never had to resort to another community coming in. We we are very fortunate to have staff that's willing to come in and work the overtime. Last year was the first year in many years that I've seen that we actually had to order staff in to work overtime shifts. Last year was the first year in many years that I've seen that we actually had to order staff in to work overtime shifts.
I was thinking it's something catastrophic, I mean, if it really decimated.
I mean, we we have the mutual aid agreements or arrangements with Manitowoc. And you, we've talked about it, you will occasionally see a Manitowoc ambulance here, you'll occasionally see a T R ambulance in Two Rivers. But that's more uh service demand driven, it's it's not because we're not meeting minimum staffing, but, okay. First ambulance, an ambulance rolls, that's minimal, two people. If and if in the judgment of the medically trained dispatchers, three are needed, it's three. Your call, your back filling already, a second call comes in, I'll let chief speak to it. If I'm wrong, more often than not, we'll cover those, but we've had times where three, maybe four transports going on simultaneously. That's when you need the outside help.
Yeah, we operate a little bit different than most fire departments do. Instead of rolling a fire engine with our ambulance, we send a crew of three on the ambulance or a crew of two and then one of our utility vehicles with the ambulance. Serves a couple of different purposes, it saves wear and tear on our trucks, it saves on fuel. Uh, that extra person or persons that respond to that scene can respond back to the station and staff. So I think it's uh, it's something that works really well for us because we we do only have four or five people at the station at one time.
Jeff, you know me, I don't really care to spend taxpayer money unless we absolutely have to. We are not a young community. I think this is a have to.
Three.
If I could just chime in one more time, and I've said it before and I'm not going to be shy about saying it again unless you tell me to shut up and go away. Unless we see something give on the state shared revenue front, and they've got the money, and we need to remind our reps. You do, because you're the politicians, I got a code of ethics, I can't campaign against them or anything. They damn well better do what's in the best interest of this community because otherwise we're going to join the ranks, and I would hope council would be supportive of it, to um be out there saying, we need to, we need to exceed our levy caps. I don't want to be doing that, I don't think any one of you would raise your hand saying you're eager to do that. That's the reality we're going to face if something doesn't give on that front. And there were thirty some odd Wisconsin cities and villages that did it. This past year, there are going to be more and more. So that broken partnership with the state has got to get fixed, and this is probably the best opportunity we've had because both parties in the divided government we have, the governor and the legislative leadership, have all said, we're we're for it. We're for especially funding for public safety, firefighter, fire and EMS, police, as always, though the devil's in the details. And how does that shake out for Two Rivers? We know, and I'm not here to uh promote for him, but we know Tony Evers' plan would give one point four million additional annually. What are we going to see come out of the legislature? What are we going to see happen in the middle of the night, which is usually when budgets get settled in Madison? So please be clear about that messaging.
Anything else? Thank you, Chief Murdock.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Amanda.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimonis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc. All in favor.
All right, thank you, that brings us to for information only, Greg, you got it?
Uh, pretty basic, uh, just over the balance of the month, we have got the next regular council meeting on April seventeen, and that will be the council as currently constituted. Um, lame duck session, if you will, uh, and uh then the very next night, uh, per ordinances of fat statutes, I don't know. Uh, the very next night is the reorganizational meeting for the council. Any uh new or newly elected council members will be sworn in at that meeting. Council will select theirs, their seating locations through a drawing, uh, be asked to act on a resolution that sets the typical order of agenda for regular meetings for the coming year. And the council will also uh elect its president and vice president for the coming year. And just a reminder, that's the only time when statute provides for secret ballot. There's a nominating process and then paper ballot to select the council president and vice president for the coming year. Once a president has been picked, uh, then uh, excuse me, appointment of the three standing committees of council, Personnel, Finance, uh, Utilities and Public Works, that's, those are all made by the council president, including designating who's the chair of each of those groups. So um, that, a lot of that relates to the organizational meeting on April eighteen. So do your very best to keep that clear on your calendars and or uh make arrangements for remote participation for that meeting. Uh, regular work session will be um April twenty-four. So that's all I had, we do need the closed session as listed on the agenda, and I do anticipate there there may very well be council action upon reconvening and open, if any of the folks that are here want to stick around uh for the outcome of that closed session discussion, which I don't think will take more than fifteen or twenty minutes. This is about an existing right of first refusal the city has uh to be able to possibly buy in the future uh a parcel of land next, right next door to Woodland Industrial Park.
All right, on to thirteen, closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eight five one E. When deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reason require a closed session. Tonight, we will discuss matters pertaining to the right of first refusal held by the city relative to property at the southwest corner of the intersection at State Highway three ten and Woodland Drive. We do anticipate there being some action upon reconvening into open session. Looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Scott, second by Tim, council discussion. Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, Amanda.
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimonis.
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc. Darla Leclerc.
All right, closed session we are, do you need a minute or you set the rock and roll? Three minutes, you got it.